We actually covered 128 and 129, but I want to back up just a little bit there. Also, we're praying about our men's ministry. I want to continue to do stuff to get together. I want to get together and have kind of a fall/winter, just to get together, gumbo chili or something like that, and we get up here, break out the skeet throwers again. But just keep getting us together. You know, I feel like our men's group is kind of growing and we're getting closer to one another, and God's doing some great things. And you know, this whole study that we went through is all Kingdom Men Rising is what it's about. And it's about us stepping up. And you know, a lot of things, a lot of us have made a lot of mistakes, and some of us more than others, but there's always hope for redemption. As long as you have a breath left, there is hope for redemption, there is hope for forgiveness. But we talked about these three qualities of being a kingdom influencer, which these three qualities ended up turning into a sermon that I preached a couple of Sundays ago, because these don't just apply to men. They really apply to all of us Christians. But in the context of our study here, it is, the first thing we talked about was being a man of character. Being a man of character, you know, and it gives some scriptures there, but be sure to examine the importance of having a solid character. And we've talked about that quite a bit. And the second thing was a man of competence, identifying ways he can develop a greater competence in all that he does. And you know, I think of all of these things when, you know, Ashley and I, or Brother Clarence, when he's here, we're thinking of somebody that'd be good to lead a class for our wannas. You know, character, competence, and then the third thing. If the first two aren't where they need to be, the third thing ain't going to be where it needs commitment. You know, you need somebody that's got good character. But the thing is, you know, even if, because I ain't always had good character, and I still got plenty flaws. I was a character. And you know, but see, again, God can redeem us. God gives us another chance. God gives us another opportunity so we can correct our character. And then competence, I mean, are we willing to put in the effort and the work to be able to teach, to be able to lead? So are you competent? And then that last thing is, you know, so if your character is questionable and your competence is questionable, then there's no way you're going to be committed. And a lot of people have a lack of commitment. And it just, if you want to really, really, your witness to be destroyed, a kid will pick it out real quick. They will be able to see if you're real or if you're not. And you know, we've got to be committed. And I've heard Brother Goins say it, I've heard other preachers say it, you know, just your vehicle being out in the parking lot regularly, that is a witness to somebody that they see you're committed to your church. And of course, you know, it's, sometimes we can pretend we're committed, and in reality, we're not. But God knows, and then of course, the Bible says you're going to be recognized by your fruits. At the end of the day, you're going to be recognized. And we talked about the fact, so many, you know, about being committed. You know, when people come and they talk about wanting to join the church, that's the first thing I, well, from the second thing, the first thing I talk to them about is their relationship with the Lord. The second thing is about being faithful to the church. I mean, are you ready to be faithful? Are you ready to be committed? Are you ready to participate in, you know, studying the Word of God? And then that, none of that's about the preacher. It's about you drawing closer. Most people, you know, most, well, pretty much everybody, they say yes, but I think a lot of them, I mean, maybe, it's really what they mean. And we talked about that quite a bit. And that brings us to where we left all that. Page 130, influencing influencers. So are you an influencing influencer? So just a few things highlighted in this. You could measure the destiny of a team by its leadership. And the thing is, a church is not going to be much count if all you're depending on is the preacher. People need to come in and see the leadership of the church, not of the leader. If they don't see, that's a whole encompassing thing, is the leadership of a church. So you can measure the destiny of a team by its leadership. When, you know, I want to see my church, when somebody new comes in, go into that person, or somebody that ain't been here in a while, and they sit over here by themselves, somebody go over there and sit by them. Don't let somebody sit by their seat. You know, we're going to be, we're going to be recognized by our fruits, right? But unfortunately, today, we face a crisis in leadership. I mean, we're seeing it at the top. President of the United States, if people can't see there's a crisis, then they're blind. And I hope he watches this video. But a plethora of poor models and mentors, I mean, it's just a mess. And yet, as God's Kingdom program is designed around the process of transferring spiritual wisdom known as discipleship, you know, we've got to be influencers. You know, we've got to get to the point to where we can disciple others. And some people say, well, you just don't know what I've done. Well, I mean, did you do any worse than Paul? I mean, he was completely anti-Christian. He was an accessory to murder. He wrongfully accused, beat, jailed Christians, and God used him. But he didn't stay that way, right? He experienced 2 Corinthians 5:17. A friend of mine called me on the way out here. We have a mutual friend, we're checking on it. And we were talking about, you know, whether somebody is saved or not. And I said, well, you know, I asked my church a lot, have you experienced 2 Corinthians 5:17? Because if you've truly been saved, then the Bible says you're going to, you're a new creation. Have you experienced that? So we've got to be disciples. We've got to be influencers. We've got to lead others. You know, we talked about it a bunch of times. I mean, we ought to be in our Sunday morning Bible study, in our Sunday night Bible studies, Wednesday night Bible studies. We ought to be building teachers. That's the whole point. I mean, ever, the greatest success of any coach is that some of his sub-coaches become head coaches. I mean, that's a great, I mean, they talked about that with Nick Saban, and how many of coaches that have been under him are now head coaches, very, very successful. That says a lot about him and his leadership. And you know, so if, if all you've ever done is come and sat in a class and you've never stepped another step forward, you may want to think about that. You know, how, what kind of influencer are you being? As a kingdom man, you are a leader by nature and by creation. That is, God given. You are, by nature and by creation, it is your calling. The issue is whether or not you be a great leader. You're going to be a good leader, you're going to be a bad leader. You know, I tell people, you know, you have a testimony, it's a good one, or it's a bad one. You have influence on people. It's a good one, or it's a bad one. And it gave you several different scriptures there to read. And I'm just going to paraphrase what each of those scriptures. So it asks us to, you know, follow a passage. I thought that sounded like my line. It says, "Follow, look at the following passages, write down how each passage describes biblically-based kingdom leadership." We're going to look at the first one, and then we'll paraphrase the rest of them. But Titus, chapter 1, verse 7 through 9. Titus, chapter 1, verse 7 through 9. Of course, this is talking about qualifications for church leaders, is what this is talking about. Verse 7 says, "For a bishop must be blameless, as a steward of God, not self-willed, not soon angry, not given to wine, no striker, not given to filthy lucre, but a lover of hospitality, a lover of good men, sober, just, holy, temperate, holding fast a faithful word, as he has been taught." So somebody disciple him, and that he may be able, by sound doctrine, both to exhort and to convince the gainsayer, somebody that maybe is going against what he said, but be able to convince them. And the thing, the way we're going to convince people is by our lifestyle. I mean, you can be a great teacher and be a horrible example outside of that, and sooner or later, your influence is going to go bad. So Titus, in that set of scriptures there, is talking about being Christ-like. That's overall what that's talking about. 1 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 12, talks about being an example of the faith. I mean, we seem to have more faith in all kinds of worldly things. I mean, everybody was panicking the other day because Facebook shut down for five or six hours. I didn't even know what happened. But there were people, I mean, an uproar, it made the news and everything else. I didn't get the message, you know, until after it had happened. But anyhow, be an example of the faith. Hebrews 13:7 talks about being a faith follower, being a faith. So in order to lead, you've got to first be able to follow. And who you've got to follow is Christ. So if we can submit to Christ and follow Him, you're never going to be a godly leader. And it says Matthew 10:42 through 45. That is obviously a typo. There is no such thing as Matthew, chapter 10, verses 42 through 45. I'm assuming it's probably Mark. So just for the sake of that, we're going to look at it. Does that seem to, when I got to look at it, that seemed to be more in line with this topic? So just a typo there. I make them all the time in my messages. Chris will tell me once in a while, he's, "Man, you said this scripture, but that ain't what you read." I do those kinds of things. It's real easy. Mark, chapter 10, let's look at that, 42 through 45. It says, "But Jesus called to them, called them to Him and said it to them, 'You know that they which are accounted to rule over the Gentiles exercise lordship over them, and their great ones exercise authority upon them; but so shall it not be among you; but whosoever will be great among you shall be your minister.'" And I tell people, as a Christian, we're all a type of minister. Look at the word. It simply means one who serves. We're all a type of minister. Now, the Bible is very, very clear who should be the preacher, who should be the pastor. It's a guide. I don't know where churches go wrong with that part. They must take that section together so they don't have to look at it. But the Bible is very clear on that. And again, the Bible, by our very nature, by our very creation, and by our calling to God, we are to be leaders. That is what God has called us to be. And but if you can't be a good follower, you're not going to be a good leader. And these scriptures here are talking about being that follower. "And whosoever of you will be chiefest shall be servant of all." And Jesus is really just describing himself. "For even the son of man came not to be ministered unto, but to minister." Or, and even some versions, you look at it, it uses the word "serve" right there. "But to serve, and to give his life a ransom for many." So I think that's probably just a typo there, where it says Matthew, probably is Mark, because that really fits in. Galatians 6:9, you know, "Don't grow weary. Stay Christ-centered." It's really easy. If you, if you close this, and you let it collect dust, and I know, you know, some people got, you know, different Bibles for different things, and I've got a few, but this is just, this is the only one that I like, because I've got 17 years' worth of notes written in this thing. And I don't want it to go nowhere. But if it's collecting dust, you're giving old devil an invitation to come in and take up residence. So don't grow weary. And John 13:34-35, that's kind of our theme verse. I feel like it's our theme verse for our church, you know, and he said, "Jesus is love." And he says, "Love in a way that they will know you're a Christian." And he says, "You know, love them as I love you." So we need to love them like Jesus loves them. And then it lists there at the top of page 131, a few, it's all kind of all pulled out of these verses we've read. So these characteristics, steadfastness, kindness, love, faith, self-control, dignity, teachability, hospitality, and a love for God's Word. These are some qualities that contribute to making a man a great leader, making a man a great leader. So down there towards the bottom, it says, "One of the biggest mistakes we make in raising up future leaders is the assumption that great leadership is taught and not caught." Well, when you are a good leader, it ought to be contagious. So you can't just make somebody a good leader, you know. But when they see you leading, and they see you serving, so I mean, the best leader you have is one that leads through serving. And I've used this example before. One of the district managers in an office of, I worked at once in a while, he's retired now, they refused to have a janitorial contract in their office. We had that option in our offices. He refused. He said, "We could clean our own office." And each week, or every other week, whatever it was, each person, it might be, "All right, Brother Goins, it's your week to clean the toilets. Brother Daryl, it's your week to sweep the floors. Brother Dean, it's your week to wash the windows." And I was in the office one day, and it was his week to clean the toilets. And that said a lot to me, you know, that he was willing, as a district manager, I mean, by all means, he didn't need to get down there and do it. He didn't have to, but he chose to. He wanted to lead by example. And a lot of people are a lot of him because of that. He put his people ahead of him. So he said, "I'm not going to ask you to do nothing." I wouldn't do it. And he didn't just say that, you know. He did that. So, you know, there's ways that we can be a great leader. And again, it's not necessarily that it's taught, but that it's caught. Should be contagious. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I saw a post today, and they said, "Oh, you know, the whole problem is, we took God out of schools. We took God out of our homes." You fix that? Oh, absolutely. I mean, if God would have, if we would have took prayer out of our home, it'd have never been taken out of school. Wouldn't have happened. But it's, we've turned over our children to the public system to teach and to raise. But the Bible says, "It is our responsibility." It is our responsibility. And then if you do see your kids somewhere, it's your responsibility to know they're getting taught right. And speaking of getting taught right, BESI, which is the educational hierarchy in Louisiana, they're open for public comment right now on whether they should bring critical race theory into Louisiana. Maybe want to look into that, because that is, that is really, really bad education stuff there. But developing key influencers who can solidly speak on biblical truths and navigate the storms of society, it requires guidance, practice, learning, listening, and so forth. And I mean, it, doing all these studies, sometimes I get a little overwhelmed, and you know, because we got, we got three studies going, and plus our sermons, and then I'll get, I'll get a couple of calls from Faith Training, and they'll need somebody to come and speak. And a week after next, I got three different times I go and speak that week. And sometimes, but, you know, I get, I get wore out sometimes, but then, man, then that refreshment of the Holy Spirit just builds you back up. And but we've got to, we've got to look for that guidance. We've got to practice. We've got to learn. We've got to listen. And there's so much more. And the last sentence there, it says, "Learn, grow, listen, teach, discern, practice, model." We've got to do those things. And a question for you to think about, what would need to change in your life to make room for more relationships with men, which you can grow, of course, it's talking about in Christ, as well as help others to grow too? So what, what do you need to do to make room? I mean, I was really excited the first meeting or two. I think we had 22 men, and then, you know, and then it kind of, which is, that's not unusual. And a lot of people show up first time or two, and then it kind of settles down, you get your core. And, but, but think about, what's stopping our men's group from growing? And I think it's, more of us need to be examples. More of us need to be examples, and then other men will start seeing that. Other men will start realizing that. So I ask this question again. What would need to change in your life to make room for more relationships with men, in which you can grow in Christ, as well as help others grow too? So just something to think about there. Page 132, just a couple of things here. And we actually already talked about this example. The best coaches have multiple assistant coaches who go on to coach teams themselves. And that, and you know, think of that as from a spiritual perspective. I mean, in a church with a bunch of men in it, somebody ought to be called into the ministry. And, you know, that's, that's, I think it's a sign as one, is a lot of people aren't responding to the call anymore. I mean, God's still calling men, but how many of us have heard a call? And it ain't necessarily that He's calling you to be a preacher, but maybe He's calling you to be more attentive to study, to then step up to one day be a teacher. And, you know, what is God calling you to do? You're not here just for you. Now, the world would teach you otherwise. They would teach you, it's all about you. You need to take care of numero uno. And what's, Brother Corey mentioned some, one of the new sayings, I hadn't heard it, but you know, just be you. No, just be like Jesus. That's, you know, that's one, a secular saying that you're starting to hear some of, but you're not here just for you. You're here for others. You're here for others. You've been crafted and created by God as an instrument of influence for furthering of His kingdom here on earth, for His agenda, His kingdom. And I mean, Jesus prayed in the book of John, He prayed to God. He said, "You know, God, protect them." He said, "Don't take them out. Protect them in it." I mean, we're here to be His hands and His feet. But it is time that we rise up, make, as men, to take our stand against the enemy's schemes. I still have not gotten used to putting these things on. I wonder if things are so much clearer with them. 2 Corinthians, chapter 10, verse 3 through 5, I'm going to read it here for you. Somebody else read that, if you got your book, or if you want to look that scripture up. 2 Corinthians, chapter 10, verses 3 through 5. So that last line there, and we've talked about this scripture before, is "taken even every thought captive." And that, that's a scary thing. You know, we talked about that on our Sunday night, or excuse me, our Wednesday night scriptures, we looked at some with, that we need to personally look at within ourselves. But in Paul's talking to the Church of Corinth here, and he had lots going on with the Church of Corinth, and he says, "You need to take every thought in captivity to the obedience of Christ." So even our thought life, what's going on there? All right, the middle of page 133, it says, "Where do you think our culture could wind up if any army of kingdom men were to rise up for righteousness, justice, and furtherance of God's Word?" I think a big revival would break out if men started standing up. And again, don't disqualify yourself. Don't disqualify yourself, because, man, God used, He used some rascals. But see, He brought them in as they were, but He didn't leave them that way. They were, they experienced 2 Corinthians 5:17. They said, "You know, God has made me new. He has made me new." And some of them, Peter, who went on to be one of the greatest evangelists ever to walk the earth, you know, it took a few different times. He'd, "All right, Peter, let's talk about this one more time." You know, and then Peter'd go on, and he'd be doing good, and then he'd kind of get off again, and he's, "All right, Peter, let's talk about this one more time." And I love the fact that we see that God don't give up on us. I mean, He don't give up on us.
Was it Peter that tried to buy the Holy Ghost salmon?
I don't recall.
No, it was someone, Simon, the man at the gate of beautiful, the Askanong, and he said, "Silver and gold have I done, but how I have, we give to thee." And so he was, the Holy Spirit was the gift, and the sharing of the Lord Jesus.
But talking about buying stuff, you know, I think a lot of people, you know, you hear it in some old country songs, right? About throwing a little extra money in the play, thinking we can get forgiveness that way. But I think revival would break out if more men stood up, and more men got serious about the Word of God. Now, you know, and some people may look at you, if you, you know, for the first time, you really, or maybe the first time in a long time, you really get to the point, you're ready to get serious. And I've heard a lot, you know, I've heard men in here say, "Man, that's it. Me and my wife, we're going to be here, and that makes it a Sunday or two, and it's back for once or twice a month." And, but see, God didn't give up on you. God hadn't give up on you yet. But we waged this battle through the power of the Spirit, and by using weapons of spiritual warfare, because the ultimate battle is not carnal, it's spiritual. So you know, we ain't going to win the battle with these. We're not. Now, I'm saying, you know, you may not ever have to defend. You said, you just might. But the ultimate battle that we're fighting is not a carnal battle, it's a spiritual battle. So one of the primary weapons is the wisdom needed to discern truth from Satan's lies. And, you know, and we've talked about this example quite a bit, you know, so I read, I wasn't back then, but before they had all the technology they have now of being able to tell what fake money is and stuff like that, is the people that were to identify fake money, never studied fake money. They only studied the real thing. So that when they saw something that wasn't the real thing, they knew right off. We need to study the real thing, Jesus Christ. A lot of times, we look to, to other people, and we end up getting tricked. But Satan uses deception as a primary tool in keeping men held back from living as leaders they have been designed to be. And He will. You know, old devil looking on your shoulder, "Oh, you know what you've done, or you remember what you did, or you remember what you said, you ain't worth it." Well, you say, "You know I'm not, but through Jesus I am. Through Jesus I am," each and every one of us. And I want you to look at this little, this thing at the bottom, little box, it asks us things to pray about, and see how many times it points the finger at us. Pray about ways you can both better discern God's role and lead in your life, and how you need to grow, as well as how you can live with greater kingdom influence on those around you. As God brings ideas to your mind, ask Him to open doors and show you the way on how to pursue them. Let Him know you are willing to be used by Him to positively impact the lives He brings within your spheres of influence. You know, I try to, occasionally, I'll ask somebody to fill in for me. And sometimes, you know, I do it hoping it'll encourage them to start coming home. And plus, it's, you know, I'm trying to see, are they, you know, are they serious? And, you know, that's just giving people opportunities to step up. You know, we need, man, we got to be kingdom men. And on the next page there, it has a kingdom declaration. And, you know, Dr. Tony put one in here, and this one may not pertain to you specifically, but I encourage you to read that and write something like that for yourself. But read that, and it's a, it's kingdom declaration. And you know, there are some things in it, you may say, "Well, you know, well, I'm not married," or you may say, "Well, I'm, I'm not a parent," or you may say, "Write a declaration that fits you." And be willing to sign. There's nothing like putting your name to something. There's nothing like putting your name to something. And reading through this declaration, you know, it may think, make you think about some things you wish you would have done, or should have done, or didn't do, or whatever. But again, 1 John 1:9, you know, when you get to feeling unworthy, because the devil, don't matter how good you are, he's always going to matter, he's always going to remind you of how bad you were. The devil's going to try to do that, but you just go, hey, the Bible, oh, little John over there, it says, "Greater is he that is in me than he that is in the world." Satan is known as God of the world. And, but think of a declaration. I encourage you to read that and write something down. The top of page 135 there, it says, "Take a moment to read through this declaration and write down your thoughts on where you need to improve and focus." And of course, you know, we need to focus on Christ being a better example. The middle of page there, without a doubt, we face a culture that wants to trick us, trip us up, get us to make the wrong decisions in this life. But the answer to whether we will experience spiritual victory in our walk as men is in our hands. Is in our hands. Our future is families, churches, communities, communities, even as a nation, is in our own hands. Satan only appears to be winning. And if you think Satan is man, I think Satan is one, you obviously ain't read the back of the book. We win. We win. And we don't know when we're going to win, but we win. There's going to be ups and downs about it. And if you are a child of God, you're going to be there at the championship day. You know, we, we're going to be celebrating with Jesus Christ. So if we, as kingdom men, collectively choose to follow Christ by cultivating a relationship with Him and submitting, again, y'all heard, if you can't serve, you ain't going to be able to lead. So cultivating a relationship with Him, submitting to His rule, we will defeat the enemy at every turn. Any other path we pursue will result in further destruction, and the choice is ours. It's our choice to make. We must rise up as one voice and one example for each other, for our families, for our churches, for our communities, for this whole nation. "Disciple those within your sphere." That's been a theme through this whole study. Disciple those within your sphere. Now, there's some people you're not gonna be able to impact, but there are people within your sphere of influence that you have an opportunity to influence someone. And uh, man, there, there's, you, you never know what little things that you're gonna do that will open a door for somebody else. It may be at your place of work and, and the fact that you always stop and pray over your food. You're gonna impact people, I promise you. Something seemingly that little, sooner or later, somebody is gonna come to you and says, "Man, I always see you praying. I got a question." That, that, that happens. I'm, I'm telling you, something that little, and they see consistency and they know who you're praying to. Because people that worship Buddha and Allah, you know, they don't stop praying over their meal. They not worried about all that. When they see you doing that, they know. So disciple those within your sphere. Invest in your own spiritual growth and maturity. You've got to, you've gotta stop and invest. And uh, you know, that's why I, I, I do Bible studies on my own. Uh, in between Bible studies, sometimes, sometimes during these, uh, somebody Wednesday night bought me another little Bible study gate to me, and so that was my early Christmas present. And uh, you know, I, I, because I've got to continue my own spiritual growth. I mean, if all I ever do is just get up here and, and just prepare a, a sermon every Sunday, and that's my only focus, I, I'm losing my own spiritual growth. I, I'm going backwards and, and then I'm gonna end up being bad at, at, at being your pastor. But so I wrote down something here at the bottom. This old world that Satan's sidekick, that's what it really is, aims to make the men more feminine. It's happening all around us. The women more masculine, and why is that? What, I, I wanna see, what, what's y'all's interest? Why is that? Why is this world trying to make men more feminine and women more masculine? I'm gonna tell y'all, like, my college professor used to tell me, "All in answers is right, but that's not, that's not what I read there." It's the opposite. We, we had a guy this week, a guy that thinks he's a woman. Was just given, ain't never served a day in the military in his life. Is a four-star, I think, admiral in the military and in charge of health for the United States of America. That's the opposite of the Word of God. That's why that, that Satan wants to make men more feminine and women more masculine, because all, all of what y'all said is correct. It is the opposite of what the Word of God says. So we, we in a pickle. So what, what we got is a lot to be praying for. But if, if we as men don't start stepping up in the name of Christ and, and start being the men that God has called us to be, then, then more and more and more of that's gonna happen and, and less and less and less is gonna be done about it. But we've got to stand up. But I mean, I, I tell people, you know, this, this whole walk of faith, this, it's like, I had acne really, really bad when I was in high school and had to go on all kinds of treatments and, and stuff. And the doctor told me, he said, "It's gonna get worse before it gets better." And, and that's, that's how this stuff is, this mess is going on. We've let it get to a mess. I mean, how in the world are we to the point where we're voting on a baby being aborted at nine months? Full term. Full term. I mean, your grandbaby was born at twenty-four, twenty-five weeks? And, and doing great now. Not even near full term. And, and they talking about aborting, full-term baby, we're voting on that. It's past the house. Folks, we gotta stand up as godly men and handle things as God would have us to do. So the last couple of things here. In what ways can you participate more fully in pursuing the carrying out and accomplishing all of God's good pleasure? And I wanna read James chapter 1 and uh, verse 22 through 25. I like, we need to go back to James one day. It's been a couple of years since we studied James. Man, James will beat you up, is what James. I tell, like, a preacher told me one time, he said, "Man, I encourage you, I encourage you to, to read James, but I warn, give you forewarning at the same time." So James says, and I like, James is just upfront. Verse 22, he says, "Be doers of the word and not hearers only." I mean, if, if all you're gonna do is sit and listen and not do anything about what God has put on your heart, in your mind, and all over your shoulders, he said, "You're deceiving your own self." And uh, verse 23, 4, "If, if any be a hearer of the word and not a doer, he's like unto a man beholding his natural face in a glass, where he beholet himself, go it his way straightway, forget what manner of man he was." So he looked, saw the mess, turned around and done forgot what he saw and not do a thing about it. And that's what people are doing when they're walking in this church. They're hearing the Word of God, they're hearing the plan of salvation, they're hearing the truth, and they walk out of the door not impacted, not changed. That is what this scripture is talking about. They came in and they looked at the mirror of the Word of God, and they don't do anything about it. And, and that is what this verse is describing, verse 25. "But whoso looketh into the perfect law of liberty," law of liberty, talking about the Word of God, "and continueth therein," that's a steady walk. "He beeth not, uh, he beeth not a forgetful hearer, but a doer of the work. This man shall be blessed in his deed." God has called us to be a doer of the word. And uh, the last little thing there, it says, "Take time to examine your life and choices." Your life and choices. Identify where you are making the greatest impact and look for how you can improve your influence over others for God and for good. Take a moment to write out your own prayer to conclude this time of our study together. Focus on what you are grateful for and what you would like to see improved in your own life and in the lives of those uh, of you love and uh, through your influence. So I mean, you know, we really need to think about, we, we ought to look in the mirror. Before we go to say what somebody else needs to fix, we need to look in the mirror and say, "What do I need to fix?" And then y'all heard, y'all heard the little saying, and I've, I've been, been saying it for, for, since before I got here, is, you know, "Never try to be like anybody but Christ, right? Never try to be better than anybody but yourself."
Right.
I mean, if we could do those things, you know, trying to be better, not better than anybody but myself and not trying to be like anybody but Christ. Now, we need to have mentors. I'm not saying that's a bad thing at all. We need to have mentors. You need to have a godly mentor in your life. And uh, but that concludes our study. We, we've been, been several months coming and uh, you know, it's, it's been, I had one of my buddies this, this week, matter of fact, from up in Arkansas, one of the guys I got really close to. Uh, he, he texts me this week and says, "Man, what was that?" Because I was telling him about it a couple of different times and he, he wanted to know, uh, so he could try to find it. But any last thoughts or comments or questions? Yes, sir?
I was telling Brother Goins and Brother Daryl about this situation. I, I don't know if y'all heard about it or not, but this woman in New York City, on the subway. The woman got raped.
Yes, sir.
And people stood.
And did that. Yes, sir. We're, we're, we're in a mess.
And what state of mind? They, they said that the reason why no one stopped this is because they didn't know the state of mind of this fellow.
Yeah.
What does that say about the state of mind of folks standing around?
Of society. That's right. That's right. Speaking of.
I mean, California out there, there's people going in and stealing stuff and if it ain't a thousand dollars or better. They show video, tell them, "Security, man, get out of my way."
Yeah.
He stepped aside and let it go.
We're.
I didn't even mind of ourselves.
We need to spend a lot of time on our knees. Lots. Yes, sir. And, and what old Satan, I wanna finish on this. What old Satan gonna do though? Because I mean, we've all made mistakes. The old Satan, by, by the time we, we, we starting to feel spiritually strong and ready to take a step forward, the devil's gonna, he's gonna get a different mirror and he's gonna bring it back. It's gonna be all of the things that you've done. And, and, and what we need to do is, is, is just tell them, "Hey, all that is covered by the blood of Jesus Christ." "I gave it to him and he paid my ransom."
That's right.
And, and I mean, can you, and that, that happened essentially. There's some scriptures that lead us to believe, that do me anyway, that lead me to believe that, that some people threw some of that at the Paul's face. Because there were some people that when he come back into town preaching, they was scared to death of it. It's like, "Wait a second. You, you helped stone, kill one of the Christians here a while back. Now you're here preaching? What about Christianity?" See, God, they go, God hoped of his life. And, and now, I mean, the, the probably the one in, in today's society, in today's thinking, was probably the, 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 the least likely to have ever done anything like that and wrote more books of the Bible than anybody else. That ought to tell you something about how God can change you. And God don't look backwards. He got his arm around you and he says, "Listen, look this way, this is where we hit it, not back there. Let's stand." Dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, we thank you, we love you. Lord, we appreciate you so much that you put up with us, Lord. We thank you for your love, your mercy, your grace. Lord, I pray for our little family across the street, Lord, Ms. Vernon, Lord Raymond, Amanda, Lord Mr. Roland. Lord, I, I pray, Lord, that just your, your grace, your mercy, your peace will be felt. Lord, thank you for these men. Lord, I pray for them, pray for their families. Lord, I pray for their, their sphere of influence, Lord, that you, Lord, will begin to strengthen us as we begin to serve you better, more consistently, Lord. And, and just thank you, Lord, in advance for the many blessings, Lord, that, that you have given us, that you're going to give us, Lord. Just pray that we live in such a way that honors you, Lord. Thank you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.